Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to this debate of City Council Men and Women. I would like to give everyone the opportunity to start with an opening statement. You'll have up to three minutes, and we're going to start over to my left side of the table and work our way down. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Gabe Ballard. I was born and raised in Bardstown, the daughter of a home builder. Have had the opportunity to work with him for years within the construction business, so I'm familiar with planning and zoning, the city of Bardstown, working with subcontractors and getting those things approved. In addition to working with my father, I obtained a real estate license here in Kentucky in mid-'90s, and that was an opportunity for me to serve many clients, sellers, and buyers on their real property, and learning to treat individuals with respect, and certainly within the fiduciary duties of loyalty, care, and impartiality, and those sorts of things that would accompany a fiduciary duty. I've also worked in the hospitality industry, serving there for about 20 years throughout hotels, attractions. Most recently, I've had the opportunity to work at my old Kentucky home in the business office there, and prior to that, I worked at Bird Hum Arboretum and Research Forest for about eight years in the development department, growing the membership program to about 7,000 members, and also working with the honorary and memorial programs with the treaty and bench programs that they had for those people wanting to recognize their loved ones. Most recently as well, I have had the opportunity to work as a volunteer coordinator in a part-time capacity at the Bread for Life Community Pantry, and I've met a lot of people there, and I do know that service to everyone is vital in this community, and I hope to continue my years of service within this community through a member, as a member of Bardstown City Council.
My name is Bill Scheckles, and I am seeking my 10th term as your Bardstown City Councilman. I also spent four years as your mayor, which I think gives me a very knowledgeable insight on some of the major issues that the city will be facing now and in the next few years. My experience as a housing commissioner, small business owner, and my involvement in many civic organizations give me a well-rounded perspective on what the needs are of this city. Also, I'm the only candidate in this race that is a certified master of city government as designated by the Kentucky League of Cities.
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Barbara Blackstone, and I want to thank everybody for being here and the people that helped to organize it. I know it's a lot of work. Again, I'm Barbara Blackstone. This would be my first time to ever run and serve in City Council if you chose to vote for me. I was born in Louisville, Kentucky, graduated from UK. I've lived in Bardstown for 14 years. I've done a lot of volunteer work. I own two businesses in Bardstown. I believe Bardstown is a historic wonderland, and it's our job to preserve it and share it. I'm against political bashing, lies, and one-sided personally beneficial decisions. I'm 110% for transparency, open conversations, streamlining operations, and vision-based goals that lead to accomplishing your dreams. I will work to streamline planning and zoning applications to reduce the cost and pain of doing business with our city. I will insist we upgrade historical approval requirements and make them cost-effective, modern, tasteful, while maintaining our city's efforts to become an even more beautiful and historic location that we can share as we grow older. My goal will be to build and grow our city wisely, focusing on improving the lives of the people that live and work here. I will accomplish this by developing a new industry. That industry is wellness tourism. Wellness tourism will add facilities and activities for the children and families that is so needed in our community. It will also create new revenue that we don't have to create things like, which we'll also need for the global tourism, like the indoor pool, which I'd like to make Olympic-sized with walking tours around, with walking paths around it, and other facilities inside that facility, such as the rock climbing, spin biking, a theater that shows movies, and also would do entertainment. And then, let's see, what else did I have in mind there? We will also need to finish the surrounding walkways and sidewalks that are surrounding our city, so that we can connect with our sidewalks, ways to walk to the facilities and our schools, new restaurants and existing restaurants, historical locations, and also to our bourbon experiences. We know that our bourbon is a great thing to have, and we want to continue to partner with those people. So wellness tourism will not take away from the bourbon industry, it will add to it. The research I've done shows that it's up to $3 per dollar that's currently spent additionally for wellness tourists, and it's also up to additional three days of staying. So that's my time's up.
Hello, my name is Angel Thompson, and thank you for hosting the debate tonight. Again, I am passionate for progression. I ask that you vote for Angel Thompson for City Council because I truly believe in the community that we live within. This is the second Oda City in the state of Kentucky, so as we continue to grow and see the expansion within it, I would love to play a major part within the opportunity and the chance to see our historical infrastructure grow and be able to continue to host and show our historical portion as it grows and begins to add other additions. This is a journey that I ask that you allow me to experience within Bardstown as a member of City Council. My name is Angel Thompson. My master's is within public administration. My undergrad is within communications. I come with over 15 years of nonprofit and government experience. I currently serve as Director of Community Education. Most of you know me as the Backpack Lady. My program feeds almost 400 children or more throughout the county each Friday by sending bags home with them to eat. So if you are interested in supporting the program out there, I truly encourage the Backpack Program, but as of tonight, I'm asking for your vote. I want to be a part of your progression and change here within Nelson County and to be able to serve on your City Council. I would truly appreciate your vote. I am passionate for progression.
I'd like to thank our Commonwealth, Keisha Copeland, for organizing our event, Allison Robey, our moderator, PLG TV, and Nelson County Gazette. Thank you all for being here. My name is Betty Hart. I'm completing my second term on the Bardstown City Council. I was born and raised in Bardstown. My parents were Mary and Bill Clark. I'm the middle child of a family of seven. My husband Steve Hart was the girls' basketball coach, athletic director, and teacher at Butlerham High School before he passed away in 2012. I have three children, Nicole Wheatley, Jack Kelly, and Ellen Bowling. They have blessed me with eight wonderful grandchildren. All of my children and their families are residents of Nelson County. I've been a Realtor with Demery &amp; Hubbard for seven years. Prior to this, I owned a small business in downtown Bardstown. I worked at the Stephen Foster Story for nine years and the Toddett Tavern for 20 years. For the last 35-plus years, I've been involved in numerous civic groups, committees, and organizations in Bardstown. As a council member, I have served on the recreation, safety, and annexation committees. I am also a member of the Mayor's Park Focus Group. I am the co-founder and chair of Nail Care, which is Nelson County Addiction Response Effort, and co-chair of the Bardstown Blessing Boxes. I'm seeking my third term on the Bardstown City Council to continue my service and my dedication to our residents and our community. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming, and thanks to our Commonwealth for hosting this forum. My name is Skylar McKeon. Bardstown has been my home since June of 2019. Together with my lovely wife Esther, we have four children, a boy and three girls. We just welcomed our third daughter Meg on September 6th. Right now, I'm working for Nelson County Landfill, which means I pick up garbage all around the county. I served for several years on the Land Use Advisory Commission, which was the closest thing that we had to a city council in our unincorporated community. I dealt primarily with zoning and land use issues, helping manage the growth of a booming suburban area. This is my second time running for Bardstown City Council. I also hold a bachelor's degree in communications and a master's in education leadership. Wherever I've been, my goal has been to serve. Many people throw around the term "public servant" carelessly in politics, but for me, it really means something. My dad was a state representative, then a county councilman, and now he's a state senator, and he taught me that the most important thing that elected officials are to do is to represent the people, serve them, and protect their rights. My campaign slogan is "Ready to Listen, Ready to Serve." I don't like to promise things I can't really deliver on, but I can promise to listen to your concerns, work for the best possible solutions, ensure your tax dollars are spent efficiently and responsibly, fight for infrastructure improvements to keep up with city growth, and work to keep Bardstown's distinct small-town charm. I would appreciate your vote on November 8th.
Hello, everyone. My name is Franklin Hibbs, and I want to personally thank each and every one of you here and at home for listening to each of us tell our stories and our reasons as to why we want to be a council member. I want to thank our Commonwealth, our one moderator, and the amazing Keisha Copeland for having us here tonight and letting us tell our stories. It truly is wonderful to see how many people are running to be a voice in the community and be on City Council. I think this is a testament to how much we all care about Bardstown and making it the best that we can make it. Again, my name is Franklin Hibbs, and I'm a current council member that is currently serving my second term on the Bardstown City Council. I'm the grandson of Franklin and Dixie Hibbs, as well as the son of Franklin and Patty Hibbs, that are all lifelong residents of Bardstown in Nelson County. I have a wife Alexandria, soon to be 10 years, better not forget that, and a soon-to-be five-year-old daughter Margot, who are the highlights of my life. I myself have been a lifelong resident of Bardstown and Nelson County, except for a brief four-year stint at the University of Kentucky to obtain my degree in economics in 2008. Currently, I'm an inventory manager with Spoke to Oda in Elizabeth Town, who just celebrated 10 years with the Spoke family of dealerships. Currently, I'm serving on five committees for the City Council: Electric and Cable, Safety, Water and Wastewater, Street, Solid Waste and Transportation, and Long-Term Planning. I'm the chairman of the Bourbon Capital Community Alliance, which is responsible for the new Bourbon Specialty License Plate, that we're very proud to be the first community in the state of Kentucky to have a plate specifically for the town. That's something we really are excited for, and hopefully we're going to be seeing those in spring of next year. Councilwoman Hart and myself are also co-chairs of the Bardstown Blessing Box Program that was introduced in 2020 at the height of COVID-19. I know when we had originally talked about this program, it's something that we really wanted to get out in a time of need, and I think we really did that. We pushed hard with a lot of members of the community, Save-A-Lot, Fred Hagan, members of council, and everyone else in the community that made that possible. And I want to stand up here tonight and thank each and every one of you who supported that program through donations and getting out there and packing those boxes. I'm very excited to be here tonight to be able to answer the questions and show each and every one of you that I truly do love this community and love what I do. I've always heard that if you love what you do, then it's not a job, and for me, City Council is not a job, it's a passion. I hope all of you will consider voting for me in the upcoming election. I'm Franklin Hibbs, and I'm number three on the ballot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Robbins. I have lived in Bardstown most of my life. I ran a business for more than 16 years, and I now currently run my own small business in Bardstown. I believe we are never too busy to make our community a better place. I vow to be transparent and to be the voice, as well as offer a listening ear to all of our citizens and small business owners in Bardstown. I will value all citizens regardless of their status in this community. If I'm elected, in addition to being the council member that will be readily available to all citizens, as I've said from the start of running for City Council, I would like to lead a non-biased and non-political committee to streamline the permitting process. It's something that I have recently went through myself, and it was a very tedious process. I feel like if we streamline that, we could make it easier for the citizens, builders, planning and zoning, and the city. I am a candidate for the people with a fresh perspective, who has business ideas. I'm not political by any means, but I have a lot to offer if you choose me to be one of the next City Councilmembers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Buckman. I would like to thank you all, by the way, for your time and effort getting this program together tonight. I'm so pleased that I'm running again for a seat for the Bardstown City Council. As many of you know, I've been part of the Bardstown community my entire life, including 45 years as an independent businessman and approximately 20 years actively supporting the unique historical nature of our city. I have served on council for five of the last six terms, and I believe this experience has enabled me to understand the needs and face the challenges of the past and to build upon the lessons that I've learned. It's easy to say that we are stronger working together, but it's much harder to do, yet I've seen the City Council, particularly during this last term, come together under strong leadership and pull together. Now we are at an exciting turning point. We have a clean government, we have a strong economy, and the future looks bright. This is a very exciting time for Bardstown as the tourist industry, businesses, and new citizens seek us out. When I sought this position in previous elections, Bardstown was faced with a rapidly crumbling confidence in our government. You elected a council and mayor that spoke to the needs of Bardstown and stood firmly together facing the challenges to bring smooth and successful governance back, that which Bardstown has earned and deserves. I think if the right people are elected again, civility will remain in our city and subsequently remain with the City Council and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Matthew Cooper. I'm running for Bardstown City Council as well. I also operate a small business in the town of Bardstown. I'm here to represent the people first and foremost, above and beyond myself. I think it's most important that we have to listen to the citizens and their concerns of how this city is operated. I know we each have a vision of the way that is supposed to work, but we must listen to the citizens and their needs, the small businesses, the entrepreneurs. I'm Matthew Cooper. I'm American. I'm a member of the South, the American Legion, and Kentucky Colonel. I've raised my children here. This is a very fine place, and we have to maintain it. I appreciate your vote coming November 8th. Thank you.
Thank all of you for your wonderful introductions. Matthew, I think I got that right, right? I apologize. I live in the county, so I don't necessarily know everything here. Since you got to go last, I thought I'd offer the question to you to start first, if you think that's fair. So our first question is, what is the job of a City Council member, and how would your leadership style complement the current council?
First of all, the job of the City Council is to enforce codes, and the codes need to be enforced fairly. And looking forward, and especially in the past with this current administration, I don't believe that that's been properly executed. From what I'm getting from the majority of the business owners, there needs to be a level of fairness, especially with the Historical Review Board. And going forward, we need to promote fairness for all the people in every way.
We'll go from you this way, this way, so Mr. Buckman, I'll let you go next.
Would you mind just repeating that one time?
Absolutely. What is the job of a City Council member, and how would your leadership style complement the current council?
Well, our primary goal as a City Council person is safety for our community, as all of you know, and we've obviously done a really good job of that over the past few years. You know, I think our job is to make sure we run a clean government, clean local government, and we also need to promote progress and economic progress. It should not be agenda-driven. You should be very committed to this job of being on the council. I think it's important that you show a lot of interest in civic engagement. I think you need to represent all of the people. I believe you need to bring a very balanced view. Obviously, you need to work well with staff. You need to know what the position really calls for. I think my life experiences give me a very interesting perspective to the council. I think my record speaks for itself. I'm here, no one favors, and I'm not influenced by anyone or whatever, what somebody might have a personal agenda. City Council is about serving, and I think staying involved in the community. Thank you.
I believe the job of the City Council is obviously to work for the people. That's what we're here for. You want to make sure that the city, you know, the city government is transparent to our citizens. They also, you know, set the ordinances and the budget for the community. I believe that I, with my past experience, like I said, I ran a business for 16-plus years. I had at times 25-plus working under me, and I just think that it's very important to be that listening ear to all of our, to everyone in our community. I do have experience with budgeting in the business I worked for and my own business. I think you need to really pay attention to detail. I think you need to ask questions and seek answers, and that's what I think is most important about working for the City Council.
I think being a City Council member, first and foremost, is taking care of the budget. We need to be fiscally responsible with every one of the taxpayers' funds and make sure they're being used in the best manner possible. I think we've done a great job in these last four years focusing on making sure our police department and our fire department has been adequately staffed and maintained. We've created a fire department with Fire Station 1. It's decreased our ISO rating, which hopefully has translated to a decrease in insurance premiums for a lot of us here. We also have a police department who we have fully supported in adding new positions, new equipment, and getting accreditation, which only 25% of the police departments in the state have been able to get. Budget is a massive portion, but we also need to be here and be good representatives for the community as well. We need to be a voice of reason and be the voice for all the constituents, not just in a district, but for the entire city. I am that voice for you. I want to be here for you, and I want to be a person that you can come to and know there's no judgment. Consider voting for me, please, on November 8th. Franklin Hibbs, thank you.
So with regard to what a City Council member will do, I think primarily we're focused on keeping the city functioning, overseeing and passing budgets, and of course, a major part is representing all the citizens fairly and equitably. Another thing is listening to the citizens and bringing their concerns to the forefront and doing our best to address those as, of course, we have jurisdiction. You know, we need to attend to public needs as well. What can I do with my leadership style? My goal is to be a servant to the people. I bring a people-first perspective, focused on what citizens have said that they need, what is of concern to them, and that would be my priority. I also know how to seek out and listen to voices who can best speak to the issues wherever there's a local concern, and, you know, we need to talk to the people who are most affected by that, also the ones who have experience in certain matters. And most importantly, I stand for truth and integrity in government and leadership, and my focus is on ensuring that the public can keep their trust in their elected officials.
A City Council member's duties are actually outlined by the KRS statute, and that includes the fact that we approve and review the budget, we approve all of the Historic Review Boards, COAs, and all of the ordinances. We also approve the hiring of our police chief, our fire chief, our chief financial officer, our city clerk, and a city administrator, should we decide to have one. The mayor and the department heads with the city are responsible for all of the day-to-day and everything else that happens in the city, but we all know we do a whole lot more than that, and it's our responsibility. We accept phone calls and texts and any type of communication from citizens who are experiencing issues or have questions, and we want to take care of those in an expedient manner and do the best we can to get them the answers they deserve. My leadership style is I'm a consensus builder. I think anyone will tell you that's ever worked with me or for me that that is how I like to do things. I'm not a dictator at all. I'm out and about in the community a lot. I'm involved in a lot of different organizations, so that gives me the opportunity to talk with a lot of people and to determine what things we might need to address and do better. I'm also very resourceful. I guess because of my age and I've been around so long, if somebody needs something, I typically know where to send them and who they need to talk to. So I'm very blessed in that aspect. Thank you.
I believe that the responsibility of a member of City Council is not only to be a representative of the community, but you're responsible for the maintenance, the upkeep, and the growth of the community that we live within. I believe that it is very important that the people trust you, although you may deal with the budget one day, and although you may deal with another faction another, I think the most important thing is the genuine concern to see that your community, the city of Bardstown, continues to grow and to be able to maintain and upkeep for the people in the community. Over time, things change, infrastructures change. It may be the difference between whether or not if there need to be pipe repairs, or it may be the difference of an expansion, of having a new growth that takes place within your community. It's your City Council that's responsible to adhere to the changes and the needs of the ongoing processes within our community, and how to make those things accessible and available to the community, so that not only that you see your City Council as people that represent you, but that we are all fostering relationships and growing collectively as a community. My name is Angel Thompson. Please vote for me for City Council. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Blackstone. I think the responsibility is to listen and serve, and we need to do it, well, listen and serve our community. And what I keep hearing, because I've served for 14 years as a volunteer, one of the ways I served was by being a chamber ambassador. It gave me the opportunity to meet a lot of businesses, and it gave me a lot of opportunities to meet the tourists and the people that live and work here, and it's, they keep telling me that they just need more for the kids. I've also been a substitute school teacher, so I've worked in all the schools and the ATC school. Listening back to 2018, when we all, when the people that serve us now were talking, one of the big things was workforce ready. I'm not so sure that's working. Our test scores were really, really low in Nelson County. In fact, they're failing, so maybe we don't need to do workforce ready. Maybe we need to do more of those, like, creative activities. Maybe we need to do more recreation. Maybe we need to do more fitness. Maybe we need to keep these kids off of drugs. Maybe we need to do things like that. Those are all parts of what we do. We also need to, I know being historical is a part, preserving our historical areas is very important. I 100% believe- I 100% believe in that. I think this is the wonderland of history, but it shouldn't be so difficult for new people to start a business and come in and get through the system of getting their homes improved or doing some basic, changing your windows or doing things to improve your home. There's so many new, modern ways to do it. I just think that we need to upgrade and streamline our system of working with the city so that it's easier for businesses and citizens to live and work here. Also, continue to put our efforts into finishing that pool. I know that two, over $200,000 have been spent on research to figure out about how to do the pool and the recreation center. So, I'm looking forward to working with our community to continue to work on those efforts. I know that they've made a lot of progress and that it will get even closer and closer to making that happen.
There's two major functions that the city council is entrusted with. Number one is to create and enforce ordinances, and number two is to approve the budgets that is presented to us by the mayor and his staff. As far as a council style, the best method of government on the county, on the city council is compromise. Our leadership style is compromise, and I can say without a doubt, in the 20-some years that I've been involved in city government, that these last four years have been the best years that this Barstown City Council has had, as far as being with the council and the mayors and their ability to get to, to come together and do the right things for the city of Barstown. There's no, there's no set personal agendas. Everybody's on the same page. Everyone has the one purpose of trying to make the city of Barstown the best, the best city it can be. And this past four years has been the most enjoyable four years that I've had the entire time that I've been involved in city government because of the leadership style that this particular council has had. Agreeing to not, not always agreeing on every fact, but agreeing to disagree sometime, but able, in the long run, to be able to come together in a compromising position to make sure that we do what's best for the city of Barstown. And that's what a good city council member does.
I believe that transparency in government is vital in fostering trust and open communication between leaders and citizens. I am a huge proponent of open records and open meetings and your right to know under the law. I have educated myself by doing those things. I've made dozens of open record requests over the past five years. I read statutes and city meeting minutes as they're available on the website. That's really how I've educated myself in knowing what is going on within city government. There are actually two components to government. There is the business side of government, which includes utilities, water, sewer, electric, garbage, and cable net, because those are businesses that the city owns. And then there is the government side of city government, and that consists of those matters before the council to approve property taxes, salary increases, adopting ordinances, municipal orders, certainly the budgets, the audit expenditures, and much more. I know is encompassed in all of those responsibilities. So, I do have a good oversight in what those responsibilities would be in addressing those matters. Have looked at the budget, and I am, there are things that I recognize on the budget that I question and...
You guys are so well behaved. I love it. For the next question, let's mix this up, and Angel, I'll start with you, and we'll go this way. With the recent growth of Barstown and our community, in your opinion, what type of impact, if any, has there been on our infrastructure?
Well, I currently serve on the board for Main Street. I also serve on the board for Habitat for Humanity, and I also serve on the board for Bethany Haven. And with the infrastructure, when I refer to it and I think of it, one of the biggest impacts that I've seen has been the growth that's taken place within Barstown. With the growth that has taken place here, when you live in a historical city and it begins to grow, the upkeep of that infrastructure is extremely important because the sand piping, sewage, water issues, those things play a major role on the continuous growth of the community and a part of the infrastructure. And being able to supply the means and the needs that are necessary to continue to encourage growth for our community. I also believe that it's very important that we collectively look at the infrastructure and how that we are creating opportunities, not only for wealth that may move into the area, but to collectively be able to continue to support and make it accessible for the local people within our community to be able to function and live as well. I think it is very important to consider the infrastructure and the means of what people need in order to expand and how to cater to the areas that are historical that we need to have the upkeep of for our tourism and for the continuous experience of the people that we have that come here and love our community. And I believe that it's very important because the infrastructure provides the balance. It's the balance of, I live here, and it's also the balance of taking care and being open to our tourists that come here to visit as well, and being able to make sure with that that there's a compromise. Thank you.
The growth of our community is definitely a challenge to our infrastructure. We all know that. With the ARPA funds, the city has earmarked $3 million to date to upgrade our water, our sewer, our cable, and our internet. Now, a lot of those internet improvements are fiber optic, which will hopefully overweight a lot of outages down the road. Another thing that we're working on that we announced back in the spring is that we've received a $10 million grant in partnership with the county to put in a new water line. You know, we've had, for a number of years, a challenge with our water when Citizens Lake goes down in the summer. So, this is an investment that we are making to improve the water situation in our community for the next 25-plus years. And this will benefit, of course, Nelson County as well as Bullitt, Harden, and Mead County. This is also the cheapest and the easiest way for us to get water into our community. Thank you.
So, growth always puts a strain on the current infrastructure. I think that's pretty apparent. We need to have vigilance in maintaining what we have. Oftentimes, growth can become such a major focus that sometimes the current stuff isn't tended to quite as well, but there needs to be a focus in on maintaining what we have, making sure that is kept up well. And then, expansion, of course, especially roads, I think that is important, especially since we are a tourist-driven, tourism-driven town, and that brings in a lot of visitors and, of course, revenue. So, you need to have ease of travel in and out of here. And, of course, that's only one aspect of the infrastructure, so many other things, sewer, water, internet, and so many other things. I do have experience managing the growth of a growing area, made a lot of decisions, and I think one of the most important things in that is sometimes you need to be able to say no or say we need to hit the brakes, slow down on certain things like new buildings, subdivisions, or major land uses that will have a heavy impact, but also right down to simple things like we need to be careful and considerate of the citizens who are affected by our work to fix or expand infrastructure, because that's their, you know, that's their lives, their property that get affected when the city has to come through and dig up their yards. We need to be careful to make sure that they have proper notice. Our growth and expansion needs to be carefully and fairly managed so that the current citizens are dealt with in a way that makes them feel good and, of course, also is welcoming to new citizens.
Growth is always going to impact infrastructure, and it's on the council and the mayor and everyone at the city to make sure we stay on top of that. Not only do we need to look at today, we also need to plan for the future. If you ask Jessica in the engineering department, she probably gets tired of talking at city council meetings because there's always something on the agenda to talk about, and hats off to everybody in the engineering department and the utilities in general, who've done a great job in trying to forecast and predict what we're going to need in the future. As Betty alluded to on the water line with Lovable Water, that's a sorely needed project that's going to double our water capacity and provide a fair access to water pressure to everyone, our residents, as well as our industry. You know, growth in our community is always going to be a tough thing because how do we maintain our small-town charm and still allow everyone here the same access to clean water, to internet, to cable, to sewer? And it's something I really wanted to talk about as well is the new multi-use recreational facility that we're focusing on. Our growth has now caused us to not be able to really use our current rec department to its fullest. So, that's something that we've been focusing on here in these last couple of years is how can we analyze the sustainability and the viability of this project moving forward? We've already started a couple of different studies, one with BIDC, the county, and the city all together, to figure out the viability of this facility. And last fiscal year, we allocated around $100,000 to hire architects and engineers to develop renderings, survey the property, develop the budget, and forecast cost for this project. This next phase we're going to focus on is when we have the full breakdown, we are also going to try to raise funding to help offset these costs. So, growth does impact infrastructure, but I think these last four years, we've done a good job trying to stay on top of that. Thank you.
I believe there are a couple of areas that the city is kind of lacking in infrastructure, one of those being the internet. We are all aware of the recent internet hack that we had. I feel like there are things that we can do to make our internet safer and better for our community. I do think that there are sidewalks that still need repaired to maintain safety for our citizens. Several years back, there was a change in process for the water to go from chlorine to chloramine, and that's something that I would like to see if that is still on track and, you know, to make our water better for our citizens. And I feel like our city should not just fix an issue for a day or, you know, a week, but build on something to look towards the future, and that's what I think is, should be done for our infrastructure here.
Thank you. Well, Betty and Frankie kind of stowed a lot of the thunder when they talked about, you know, our water source, and, but a few more things that I think that would be important here, and it's actually kind of the essentials that the city should be providing. What I mean by that is water, electric, police protection, fire, and that type of thing. So, with growth, those experience a lot of growing pains also. We also seem to think we might have a parking situation as far as in our downtown area, and as we grow, I mean, that's a good problem to have, in my opinion. We also, as you know, our schools have kind of moved away from downtown, some of them, and our traffic situation needs to be addressed. That's our real growing pain on Templin and obviously Fifth Street, Fourth Street. The bypass really has nothing to do with us, but that will alleviate some of the pains. I think that's really going to happen too. But we still have to make sure that we welcome new growth, but that is so vital to a community. You know, if you get stale or you don't keep moving forward, that could ruin your community. With this growth also, I mean, it's obvious that we need a new industrial park. We need to expand. That's been a real situation right now, trying to get enough land to be able to do that. And I think that we need to really have emphasis as we grow like this, that we have to protect the infrastructure and the buildings and the real character and charm that Barstown experiences, and that is going to be very important going down the road to be able to control all that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Going forward, our infrastructure, I have big questions with. I don't understand, man, I'm all about new job growth. I'm all about employers getting more employees, but why does the city, we're financing transformers for Heaven Hill? We're giving them the water, the very water that we've all spoke about, to them. And I agree with the industry, the suburban industry is booming right now, but why should the citizens of Barstown have to pay for industry? And they, they don't mind taking it when the city, when the city residents are struggling with water pressure, with water prices. I have a good confidence that we're having a hard time even getting water meters to be put in for new construction. And the Lovable Water Company has been very gracious with us. We've made an investment in that. I hope it works out well, but it needs to work out for the citizens of Barstown. And we need to support the industries, of course, but why should we be giving them incentives to, I just, I don't agree that the taxpayers of Barstown are getting a fair shake at that.
Yes, ma'am. I didn't think about the whole transition of the mic in the rotation. Sorry.
Okay, so, on the infrastructure, yes, the water project is probably, the water and sewer projects are probably the biggest projects that we have going on right now. It is, from what I understand, overall cost is between $10 and $11 million, and it involves a partnership between the city of Barstown, Nelson Fiscal Court, and North Nelson Water District. And it's also my understanding that Fiscal Court will contribute $5 million to the project, and City of Barstown and North Nelson Water District will be responsible for the remainder of the construction cost. So, we're going to start that project. It will be around Four Roses Distillery and Run along 245 coming up that corridor. We have, we've replaced, city's replaced sewer pump stations that serve Corman's Crossing and Royal Crest subdivisions. There are lots of things going on with the water, with the water program. I do know that the chlorine, chloramine conversion actually happened in 2018, and this conversion or agreement with the Lovable Water Company couldn't have happened unless that happened first because the water would have had to have been compatible with the Lovable Water Company. Let's see what else is going on. Now, we've got, okay, we don't have to worry about it.
Well, major, major growth in this community, I can speak highly of it. As a chairman of the Barstown Industrial Development Corporation, a reliable water source is the number one, the number one issue that we're dealing with right now. And fortunate enough, with the $10 million that the state legislator, with the help of Representative Chad McCoy, has brought to us, along with the... help of Representative Chad McCoy, has brought to us, along with the ARPA fund that the city received as well as the county received, that project is paid for. So that's, that's number one. Also upgrade of our aging infrastructure, you know, Barstown being the second oldest city in Kentucky, naturally with the, one of the first cities in Kentucky that had a historical district that has, so therefore you know our infrastructure is aging and as you've seen running around town this last summer, you've seen how we've worked on our downtown projects. We're doing it systematically to upgrade all the aging infrastructures that we're dealing with. And affordable housing is important when you've got companies all over looking to come to Barstown and Nelson County to make it their home, make their the focus of where they operate their businesses and they bring employees. So unfortunately, the other side of that affordable housing is, is that people that move in here, they want to have nice, they want to have nice places to live. And of course that raises our property value up tremendously as you all, if you read the, if you read the real estate ads, you know what we're talking about. But, but also specifically, we don't, we don't allow any issues, I mean, companies that come in here that put a major tax on our infrastructure.
Well, I think that it's a big opportunities for us to grow smart. I'm so glad to hear that the water and cable is being added and that that's well on its way. I'm also thrilled to hear that they've, and I'm aware of the money that's already been spent on the recreation center. So I'm thrilled to hear that they're moving forward with actually doing that. That's great because I see so many of our families asking for that. What, I'd like to be very much involved with that because I have some great ideas of how we can help pay for that. As I mentioned earlier with the tourism, the wellness tourism, adding that as an infrastructure and a way to create more wealth so we can build that center and actually have that center be part of the attraction for people to come to. And then parking was mentioned. I have a great idea for parking too. I used to work in building and maintenance services where I did full services for business in Los Angeles, California, giant buildings. And parking facilities can turn into a source of income. So in Bowling Green, they have a three story or maybe four story high parking facility. And what you do is you just, you outsource that to somebody else to run it and then it becomes a source of income. And just like in Bowling Green where they put it in their historical area, it looks like a historical building. So that's another idea I have for creating income. I also think the way that we can like build our infrastructure better, grow smarter is to stop urban sprawl, which we've been pretty good about that. But urban sprawl is where you just build outward and outward and outward and focus more about building inward and upward in a better way that's more beautiful inside the historic section of our city. So some of the areas that have caught my eye are like over by the railroad station where we have the housing that's, that's not looking so great. And maybe what we could do is work with some partners to make that a live workspace. So that's the ending of my time.
Okay, for this next question, Mr. Hibbs, I'd like you to take the mic, please. There's been a lot of discussion about being transparent in our city council and there's been a lot of discussion about being fair to all the residents. So can you discuss the maybe rumors or maybe not rumors that as people in our community are upgrading their buildings, homes or businesses, that there might be some discrepancy in the rules that our historical society puts down on what type of materials you can use and why maybe some people are allowed to bend those rules?
You know, I apologize if we ever made anyone feel like we're not being fair in any of the treatments that we do. You know, HRV is tough. Those people do that for no money, just out of love for the community, make sure that we keep everything as beautiful as possible. After talking with a, with a lot of people on HRV as well, it's not just a blanket that everyone fits into, it's a case by case basis, based on the age of the home and the historical significance to the community. So I apologize if they feel unfair and I can, I can say this because I'm in, live in the historic district, but we do have to abide by their rules and regulations because it does make our downtown beautiful. I think if you ride around other communities that don't have some of the regulations and rules that we do, you'll see that it just doesn't look as inviting as downtown. So again, we apologize that you, that you feel that way, but as far as transparency goes, I wish we'd get more people to come to meetings. It is fully open, it is fully transparent, it's on YouTube. So for people to think that we're not being transparent, they're just not seeking us out. It can get on YouTube and it only takes just a, just a few minutes and albeit they might not be the most exciting things to watch for 30 or 40 minutes or an hour and a half. But we really are here and accessible to everyone. So again, we apologize if you feel that way, but reach out to one of us, we'll be glad to show you how to get on YouTube, how to access that. Or better than that, just come to meetings. When I ran for city council initially, I thought it was one of my duties to come and see what exactly city council can and cannot do, what we can and cannot affect. And I wish we had more participation for the community and got a lot of feedback because we really do want to serve each and every one of you as fairly as we possibly can. Thank you.
I guess I'm one of those that thinks that the, between the HRV and the city council, they've been unfair on some things. For example, a city council meeting that I did attend back in, I believe it was July, there was a house on Stephen Foster that Superintendent of Barstown was demolishing and they didn't even receive yet from our standing a certificate of appropriateness to demolish that building. They did receive a permit prior to that to remodel a portion of the house, but never received a permit prior to demolishing that. Another incident was a house, a Conway House, it's the yellow house in town who had their windows replaced and the city gave, awarded them $86,000, yet Annette Filiatur has kind of been going through the same thing for several years now. So I just think that that, you know, there's, there is an unfairness there, I believe. And I feel like across the board, you need, if you're going to do for one, you need to do for the other. Maybe there's, you know, further research that needs to be done on my behalf or other citizens' behalf, but just to the naked eye, it seems like there's just a lot of unfair things going on in the community.
I know we're not supposed to respond, but I feel compelled to talk about that particular property on East Stephen Foster. That couldn't be any further from the truth. Mr. Clark was on vacation and spent three or four days of his vacation because when this project started, he had permission to take that house, to demo, to demo a great portion of that house. Anyway, he did get his permit and he waited an entire week to get that final permit to have that house demo. So he did not do anything that was not proper. As to the other house you're talking about, you know, I personally don't like the outcome of that situation either. I probably followed that case more than anybody in town. And the, the situation there was quite different than some of the others. The courts actually favored, in favor of this particular house you're talking about. So it kind of put us behind the eight ball in a way. The, this, this whole deal was, was, was settled by a mediator because the courts, we were told by the mediator to not take this any further and I think that we possibly could have won the case, but we were afraid, we were told that a jury would not favor the government is what we were told. So that situation, if you really did your homework on it, I think you'll find that it was kind of twisted, but it was still treated properly. We did not show any favoritism to them, I can tell you that.
Thanks, Joe. It sounds a lot more complicated than I was even led to believe. In all means of fairness, I still don't believe these folks got a fair shake. And if they're paying the same taxes as everybody else is paying, they, they, they have every right to do with their property as they please. We all, we're all property owners, I'm sure. And we, we're not going to let our property fall clean apart. I mean, there are, there are materials and items that you can get that look historic. I mean, I, it's very complicated, I'll agree with. And it's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to pay close attention to going into the future. We don't, we can't afford to have safety issues because we want to keep something old. You can walk down Third Street, the facades, they're not in that good a shape. If you get on top of the roofs, if you get on, if you walk down through there, it's, it's a facade by definition. And that is a major safety concern when, I mean, that, that opens up a whole other can of worms when you get right down to it. And we, we have to really take a look going forward into how we process these issues.
You start and then continue the mic on down.
Okay. With the rumors of people being treated unfairly and unequally, there's definitely some substance to that. I've talked to citizens about their specific struggles with the historical review board. Now whether the current government feels that they were fair or not, those concerns of citizens should be taken very seriously. Again, my emphasis is always on, we need to listen to the citizens carefully and heed their concerns. They're people, they have to live with the decisions of the historical review board. They have to live with the decisions being made by the government. You have to consider that they have financial hardships. Sometimes these things make sense on paper, but when it's left up to the affected parties to make those changes, that's oftentimes kind of forgotten. You know, how does that affect them where they left when all said and done? Another thing is that the dealings need to be more uniform. And in fact, we may need to add more, write more into code to ensure that that is the case. If, if the case by case decisions are coming across in an unequal way, then perhaps more needs to be codified. People's lives should receive equal consideration along with the board's vision for historical aesthetics. We do like to have a good appearance and maintain that historical charm, but at the same time, let's be flexible with our citizens and open to some compromise. And if there is an inequity brought to light, the historical review board should correct their course as much as reasonably possible.
Thank you. As far as the transparency, I think I was shocked to know that that's how some of the people in the community feel and I apologize for that. I reiterate what Councilman Hibbs said, everyone is always welcome to our open meetings. You can catch it on YouTube, Gazette reports it, Facebook Live does it. But come and attend the meeting and you know, learn to understand how things happen. I think one of the reasons that people might think that is because we have very few disagreements at our council meetings. And that's not because we are yes men to the mayor for any reason. It's the fact that we all get our materials in advance, we review those materials in advance, we contact the department heads if we have any questions. And so that we know going into the meeting what's going on and we have all, most of our questions answered. A lot of times the department heads will be at the meetings to answer any further questions. As far as the house on the corner of Stephen Foster and Fifth, that is one of the times that I can remember that we did disagree. And we put it to a vote and the majority voted and then Mr. Conway appealed the vote and filed suit in Circuit Court, which is certainly his right to do. And as Councilman Buckman said, the monies that we paid were ordered to us by the mediator and the courts. As far as HRV, you know, we all realize that the people that are on that are, have a thankless job. They are volunteers, so we certainly need to respect them even if we don't always agree with them. In 2021, the Kentucky, or the city council and the mayor hired a consultant to review all of these design guidelines and that will be completed in 2023. Thank you.
I think when it comes to fairness and how people feel that they are being treated, I think one of the things that we have to do is consider what we are hearing. So within that, what type of solutions, what kind of places can we come to that the people do not feel left out? And so therefore, yes, they are open meetings and yes, it is available on YouTube. But I think in today's nature, the one of the aspects that we can take, that gives you the opportunity to review how your website may be set up. Is it user friendly, as it can be, to people of all ages and levels of education or whatnot? What may appear to be simple to one may be difficult for another. And so therefore that creates the concept and the idea that the transparency and the clarity may be distorted for some than others. I think that we have the opportunity, when we listen to people and if they are saying that things are unfair, to also look in between the lines and the gray area. Ask them, what way is it that you feel that your need is not being met? And then come back to the drawing table and it may be simple things such as technology that can make it more accessible to someone. I also think that when we, as people, when we say that we are making things open for others to see too, that plays a part in our protocol, it plays a part in our regulation, it plays a way in the way that things are documented and presented to others. And so when someone goes to learn how to do the process to something, sometimes it is easy as saying, step one, step two, step three. Previously, I used to volunteer in a lab at the unemployment office.
The historic review board is historically difficult to work with. And that makes people feel that they're not treated fairly because it's so difficult to get anything done. So the reason that it seems unfair is because if you have enough money that you can afford architects and lawyers to fight for you, then you can get through the system and you can do what you want to do because you can go through all the hoops. And maybe you can't do every single thing that the historical society shuts you down on, but you can do a lot more. You can get your projects done because you have the means to get through the hoops of it. So I mean, that's just real, that happens. I hear from people constantly. And so we respect our volunteers that are on the historic review board. Maybe that's part of the problem. I mean, not about respecting, we should always respect each other, especially our volunteers. But maybe they're being forced to deal with rules that are out of date and I'm glad to hear you're working on updating the rules. If something looks good too, and a citizen has made a mistake and they didn't do it exactly perfectly, why don't we try harder to say, how can we work to make this work rather than tear it down, start over and spend thousands and thousands of dollars to make something that looks good now, look like it used to look before, you fixed it? And it's just, it's, it's, there's a little bit of common sense that needs to be added to the historic review board. And I know people personally that also have historic windows that cannot replace them because they can't afford the windows. I know for fact that we now have windows that can be done in a more, in a historically looking way. They're up to date windows, they're not the same ones that the historic review board wants you to use, but they look fabulous and they would be just as good and make it possible for more projects to get done. And I, I think she's saying, I'm not quite done. In my opinion, we could actually do more to make the city look a lot better if we would be more lenient and more flexible with our review.
You know, knowledge is power. And we talk, the people that talk about the historic review board is not fair. When you go into, when you go and buy a piece of property in historical When you go into, when you go and buy a piece of property in historical district and you, and you know, your realtor should tell you that you're buying property in historical district, and there's certain guidelines you got to go through if you want to improve your property. There's a simple process to go to, go through. All you have to do is go to the planning and zoning, ask what needs to be done, and they give you the instruction on what you need to get done. What happens is, most people that think it's unfair, they want to go, they want to, uh, circumvent the process. It's, it's very simple process, and it's fair to everyone. And, uh, the people that don't adhere to it, then they get called out on it. But the, uh, as far as being fair, uh, that most of the people that feel it's not fair is they haven't done their homework, and ignorance of the situation is no excuse. And, and the, the H R B process has been streamlined recently, and, and, uh, the people at work in, in the planning and zoning, it's a very, very simple process. Just go to the board and, and do what you're supposed to do. It's not rocket science.
Okay, on the, on the home that belonged to the superintendent on, um, E. Stephen Foster. July the 12th, there was a meeting to approve the certificate of appropriateness to demolish the building. The second addition to the, to the home. That demolition had already started prior to city council's approval of the C O A. In the meeting, this is what is of greatest concern to me, in the meeting, when they were voting, uh, to approve the demolition, both Bill and Roland Williams abstained from the vote because they're employed by the Bardstown Independent Schools, and this home was owned by Superintendent Ryan Clark. So they recused, they abstained from voting. Joe Buckman, because he had a contract to do the work for, uh, the superintendent, also abstained from the vote. So I came out of there thinking, oh my God, what did they just do? Uh, they didn't have, uh, a quorum to conduct business. So I actually called, uh, Chris Johnson, an attorney with Kentucky League of Cities, and he explained to me the difference between abstaining and recusing. So with the council members that were there who did not recuse, had they recused, there certainly wouldn't have been a quorum to conduct business. So instead, they abstain. What happens when you abstain from a vote accounts with majority.
Perhaps she can address it in her closing statement. Is that fair?
Would anyone like to do a rebuttal to the information that they heard? I, I wasn't, but that wasn't the point of the question, and, um, it went somewhere else, so.
I was under the understanding there wouldn't be any rebuttal this evening.
Excuse me?
I was under the understanding there wouldn't be any rebuttal this evening.
It, it wasn't, but however, the question that was asked, it wasn't the original question on the sheet, and so it kind of went elsewhere.
Well, it was about transparency, and that's transparent. So it wasn't transparent to the public what was really going on because I had to make a phone call.
I had to make a phone call to an attorney at Kentucky League of Cities to actually have that told to me and explain that whole situation.
And I, I understand that. I'm just offering it. Um, some people were cut off short, so.
If you change the rules, you'd make it kind of messy.
Okay, we'll leave it as it is. We'll leave it as it is.
Okay. As we're running down to about 40 minutes left in the evening, I think we're probably going to have maybe one more question, and we'll see how it goes, and then maybe we'll let you guys have some closing statements. So for the past few years, Barstown's had a big growth of big businesses come in, lots of bourbon, some other industries. And a lot of people feel like we've lost that sense of small, family-oriented businesses. Quite a few family-oriented type businesses have closed, the skating rink, uh, the movie theaters, and the bowling alley. So as the biggest employer in America is still small business, and I'm going to start with you, Gay, and we'll just go down this way and then do our closing arguments. What do you feel that this community could do to attract those family-owned businesses that entertain family? And what assistances could we offer to them to get them to come to Bardstown?
Gosh, that's a big question. Small business with the economy, uh, being the way that it is and, uh, individuals, uh, not being, uh, not having access to the same amount of money that governments do through all of these state and federal programs, um, I would say that it would be a challenge. However, there are small business loans available, especially to minority groups. Um, if you have a, um, if you create a business and a marketing plan and submit those, there's an approval process. I don't know what the dollar amount would be, but certainly if there was an opportunity for, say, um, uh, Nelson County Economic Development to implement those types of programs and make those available to people who might be interested in, uh, opening a new business or, uh, coming to Bardstown, uh, to create a new business and, um, you know, maybe identify with some of those needs. I know that we have, half of our workforce leaves the county, uh, so we, we would be challenged with, with that as well. And, um, so those are my thoughts on, on employment. Uh, you know, we're still struggling with employees and, and that sort of thing. The other challenge for small businesses would be for, uh, materials and supplies. They're not so readily available right now. Uh, and then also that even, even for a restaurant, the cost of food has increased tremendously. So if you were considering a restaurant, it would have to be something that would be, I don't know, affordable, um, in, in some way. Thank you.
You, you, you may mention several, several small businesses that are, that people think were family-oriented that are, are no longer involved in the community. I guess the first thing you might want to ask yourself is, who is putting up the money to operate these small businesses? Now, is, is there this, average person working down the street? Who's supporting these people? Who supported the skating rink? Who supported the movie theater? Who supported the bowling alley? So apparently, if you, if I'm an independent businessman and I've got my money invested in that, and I can't see a viable return on my investment, would you or anybody else on this panel here, would they want to continue throwing money down a red hole? And so it's, it's, it's a simple, basic economics. You know, we would all like to have a, so many of these people that are complaining, and I hear it probably more than anybody, uh, they want someone to go out and entertain them without putting forth any amount of monetary investment in. They want something for, for, for very little. And as an independent businessperson, that's very hard to do. But the average person that's complaining about that have never had to put their money up where, and, and, and talk about it. They just want to talk about it. But when actual investment comes about, uh, who's going to support that? So, you know, that's, uh, when you brought up those particular family-type investments, uh, it's, uh, it's not economically feasible. And then COVID hit for a move, for the movie houses, for example. When COVID hit, there's a, we have an eightplex theater out there. They can't get movies. Things are streaming with Paramount and Amazon and Netflix and everything else. At one time, they were, would have eight, eight test screens, and four of them were playing the same thing. So you figure.
She's right. COVID did shut down a lot of our small businesses, and that's unfortunate. Some of them also shut down because it was just harder to maintain the building than it was to, you know, it's expensive to maintain your buildings and keep that up and the safety requirements and everything else that goes along with that. That's why it's great that we're moving forward with the rec centers so that we can do some things for the small businesses. I'd like to see us put back in the bowling, the skating, and have that be part of our rec center. And then I do think that it's possible for us to, you know, we've given a lot of tax advantages to the big companies, to the bourbon companies especially. They're about ready to get a $9 million tax advantage that's going to hit us hard that's coming here. So it's going to be tougher to maintain our budgets inside the city and throughout the county. That said, maybe we need to look at what can we do for the small businesses because we've done, we've been backwards for the big businesses. So going forward, let's see what we can do for the smaller businesses. And again, that comes back to the historic and the city review and, and streamlining, you know, what you got to do to get your business active in our city because it is expensive for small businesses. Every time you have to put in a permit to get something done, like paint your front door, it costs you $250. And I might be wrong about that exact number, but if it costs you money every time you want to do something and you're small, it's really cost prohibitive. And so what can we do to work better with our small businesses to encourage them to want to come here and work here and live here? I still think we need to have live-work home development that we do on some of the places that are, that are already struggling. So if we, if we partnered better with them to help it make more affordable, make it more affordable for them to do the improvements, I think we'd have more people wanting to stay in the city, which would mean more business for the small businesses in the city. So it's kind of like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And at the end of the day, it's tax, it's tax advantages for small people, maybe some grants, and then that's, that's just, it's a work in progress as we develop as a city.
I grew up here. I grew up at Whisper, I was skating on the weekend. I went to go-kart rallies. I went to the movies on the theater, since where the courthouse is now. I think it's simple. That's privatization. Privatization is when something is privately owned. And after COVID hit, it strained the funds of all businesses. And in the mix of that, we saw companies suffer and disappear. So with that, I look at a hotel and I say to myself, wow, I want children to have the opportunities that I had as a child. And that was why I was so hopeful when it was the mention about the recreational center. But the one thing that I enjoyed most about hearing about the possibility of when they do bring a recreation center here is that I heard longevity. I heard that they were looking and planning to find sponsorship, donation, to collectively work with others and foster relationships. Because it said to me, although those businesses were privately owned, what our city council and local government is looking at bringing is considering if it'll be affordable for the community. We can build something, but looking at the longevity of how we're going to be able to fund it so that it's available to our community in the future means a lot to me. And I think that what we should consider is, is that we may not be able to bring everything back, but what we can do is begin to make new plans for new opportunities and for our future and for our children and for our community.
Well, I've had a business in downtown Bardstown, so I certainly know the struggles that a small business, uh, endures. Um, I, along with everyone else, hated to see our bowling alley close, along with our skating rink and our movie theater. I think we all have to remember, as Councilman Sheckel said, that should we get these types of businesses back, we have to support them. If we're going to go and take our children to a movie, let's don't go to E-Town or Loyola to do that. We have to patronize the businesses right here at home. If you're going to have a night out and go to dinner, think about going to a restaurant in Bardstown first before you get on the road and travel to, uh, Loyola or E-Town or another city. Um, I do want to point out that during COVID, um, the city council, along with the partnership with the county and some private funds, gave out 198 grants to small businesses. These totaled $343,750. Of that amount, $213,000 came from the city. The city, um, was responsible for that program, and we processed all of those, uh, applications. We also had a program for mask. You know, a lot of our, um, small businesses were struggling with finding masks and P P E. And so we found a way to make that happen and make those available to them at a very reasonable, um, discount. Also, anytime we have a city contract, if it's feasible and affordable, we typically will try to give that contract to a local business. You know, we need to keep the business in our community. Thank you.
Well, some things we can do for attracting small businesses, especially some that we certainly have liked and would like to see come back. I, I think a main thing you can do is offer some form of tax break, fee breaks, things like that. Because, uh, reducing financial strain on a small business especially can often work better even than a grant or some other subsidy. However, of course, the grants are a great thing as well, and perhaps we should have a little bit more of that. Um, I think also regulations should be some, see what we can, uh, ease on, up on some of those things, especially taking into consideration, once again, the hardship that those entrepreneurs would have to endure trying to follow, um, all the different rules, um, there. And let's see, see if we can't make some sort of, uh, you know, compromise, accommodation, uh, let's be as friendly as we can and accommodating for these people. If people feel like they're going to have an easy time of it, starting up a business, bringing, uh, bringing, branching out to Bardstown, that is definitely a huge incentive for them to make a go of it. Of course, all of this should be tempered with the realization, like it's been said, uh, before, um, that some businesses aren't going to succeed, and we don't want to get sucked into bailing out or funding something that isn't working.
COVID-19 was extremely hard for each individual person in this room and each individual person watching at home. Uh, my heart went out to, to everybody during this time, and especially to the small businesses who were probably the most impacted. To Betty's point, being able to pass out those 198 grants and look each and every person in the face when we gave them those checks to help them out was probably one of my most memorable moments on the council and something that I'll never forget. Uh, I think it was a really awesome program that Bardstown put together that I had some other people in other communities ask me, hey, how are you guys doing that? How are you accomplishing that? How could we implement that during COVID for our community as well? As far as the skating rink and the bowling alley, Dangerous Point, I remember doing those myself. And it was tough to see them go, but we also have to shoulder some responsibility, responsibility as individuals and as a community, that we have to frequent those establishments. We have to pay them money because if we don't support them, they can't survive. I know my generation's a little bit different. We like streaming, we like YouTube and Paramount Plus and Hulu and everything. To Bill's point, because sometimes it is easier to go watch a $7 movie on, at home sitting on your couch. Uh, so I have to take a lot of responsibility for not going to the movie theaters, even though I had some great memories there myself. Uh, I think we do need to really focus on the multi-use facility, give our kids something to do. Uh, and to Angels going on that, when we talked about it earlier, we really need to figure out the viability of that. And when we decide to implement this, if it is cost-effective for us in the future, we all have to make a conscious effort to go, to see the pools that we may have, the basketball courts we, we may have, and everything else that we may include in this program for our youth and our older generation. I myself would like to see Silver Sneaker programs and water aerobics for the older generation as well. So I hope we can all band together and do this moving forward.
Well, it's no secret that COVID affected a lot of businesses financially. Um, but also, I'm currently a small business owner myself. Times are tough right now. Our current economic situation is, is not good. Um, people just aren't spending money. Taxes are going through the roof, and that's just, you know, that's the way that that is. And I'm, I'm all for a recreation facility here. I'm all for it, but we cannot raise taxes any more than what they are currently. I'm all for it, but we cannot raise taxes any more than what they are currently to sustain something like that. So I think it would be very important to look at the budget and find areas that we can maybe take from and, you know, to, to sustain a recreation department here in, in our town. Because as, you know, we said, the bowling alley closed down, the movie theater closed down, we, our community was not supporting those businesses as they were. So are they going to support a recreation facility? Is that something that we can sustain or is that just gonna end up being something that doesn't go over and then it just ends up being another empty building in our town? Thank you.
Well, I'm a firm believer that capitalism is, is the real driver for new business. You know, we, we depend, this town depends heavily on our private sector. And, you know, it's not, I want this to sound mean, but it's not the government's place to, to give a business money and to support them. But we need these small type of businesses to, for our growth and sustain us here in Bardstown. I, I do have an idea that, that was presented to me by someone else, but it's, you know, could possibly be an advisory board appointed primarily of parents, maybe grandparents, teachers, whomever, that, that go to like Elizabeth Town, and that's always a place that people kinda talk about, to see how they did this. And, and I know it's probably private sector money, but we need to determine how that was done and see if that's viable for Bardstown. But it has to be able to sustain itself. You know, we can do, help the process along by, you know, promoting, you know, how nice our city is, show that we, you know, we have really nice educational systems that's gonna draw people in or, or businesses from another town. And we just have to draw on our, on our community strengths, such as our architecture, which includes our historic district. You know, we have art museums, we have, we have what, what people are looking for in the city. So I think we have the tools, but people have to determine if that business is gonna be right for them. And if it is, I think the people, unlike everybody else on the board, it says, we have to support those businesses. If we don't support them, they cannot sustain.
As a small business owner myself, I understand the struggles that go along with operating a business, especially in this current economic climate. It's very tough. Very. And we need to be more receptive to small businesses. We need to be more receptive to industry as well. I have a unique way of handling adversity. My trade is in construction. You have good days, you have bad days. So does city government, so does national government, state government. There's good days and bad days. We need to make sure that we are taking care of our people and listening to them exclusively. And therefore, we might get the better ideas that we need to operate. I mean, a family is a small business. We need to operate business efficiently in the best way that we can. And the more ideas, the better. And I believe we can go forward in that regard. We can, we can do what we can if we help each other. Thank you.
Okay. Thank all of you for all of your answers and candid comments. So now we'll let you finish up with just a little bit of closing statements. We're gonna give you two minutes for that and we'll just start where the microphone is now.
Once again, I'm Matthew Cooper. It's been an honor to be here this evening for our Commonwealth Forum. I appreciate the invitation. I believe we've all done well. I think we all have a common interest in the city of Bardstown, the current council members and us challengers. We are, we are all definitely all in this together. I know I am. It's very important to me and my family, my children. We have to keep on keeping on. And that's, I very much look forward to represent the people and listen to their ideas and represent their ideas, not through personal gain, not through any interest of my own, but strictly for the citizens of Bardstown. I'm Matthew Cooper and I appreciate your vote come November 8th. Thank you very much.
First thing I, I do wanna clear up a couple of things in my closing statement here. I do not have a contract with Mr. Clark on his house and the facts are not true about that demolition that you heard a little bit earlier today. And I wanna thank everybody for coming, everybody in here. Now, now it's a time to understand the dynamics to ensure we do not lose our character as we grow. And this is my promise to you. I believe my background as a businessman and a guardian of our historic towns suits Bardstown's current situation and its future requirements. But I do not believe that opening our arms to new businesses and people mean we cannot forget those of you who made this town your home and all that it is today. It is those of you who make Bardstown the place others want to come. And it is you who must always be represented by the council. I believe my candidacy and election will bring experience, leadership, and sustainability to our city. If we are continuing to move forward, we must have everyone working together in lieu of the vitriol and the angst that's creeping into small town politics. All of our decisions are made by the council are not perfect, absolutely not. Yet we are, we correct and we amend decisions as we see fit. If we are to continue our quest to be the best, it is paramount that the city and county governments and citizens work together. I think my role as a city councilman is to ensure peace, order, and good governance and to improve citywide quality of life. I'm here to serve you the best of my ability. And finally, I just wanna thank God for giving me just enough foolishness to think I can make a difference.
My name is Alyssa Robbins. I vow to represent the people of Bardstown. I'm open-minded, I am open-minded and I believe that the city council could use a fresh, new pair of eyes and offer a fresh perspective for new and different ideas. I know I have a lot to learn, but if I'm elected, I plan to hit the ground running and you will not regret it. Thank you.
Again, my name's Frank Hibbs and I wanna thank our Commonwealth and Ms. Roby for having us here tonight and letting us speak. But more than anything, I also wanna take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you that have entrusted me to make the best decisions for you and your family over these last four years. It has genuinely been my honor and pleasure to serve you all. I hope that you've seen how well our town has prospered and operated over these last four years and everything that we plan on trying to achieve in the future. I believe that it is our duty as council and community to retain the heritage and charm that defines our town, but challenge it with new policies and procedures that will further cement Bardstown as the most beautiful small town in America. I've always said that although bourbon may bring you here, our people keep you coming back and I truly mean that. Bardstown is not only a special place to me, but to everyone who lives here and visits us. It is on each of us to make sure that our culture and community continues to flourish and thrive. I hope that I can continue to learn from those who have done this job before me and carry this knowledge forward with new ideas and fresh outlooks. It will be my continued pleasure to serve for you once more. Thank you for your time and consideration and I would like to ask for your vote on November the 8th. I'm Frank Hibbs and I'm number three on the ballot. Thank you.
Once again, I'm Skylar McHugh. My life here is like yours, like many of you. I'm just a dad trying to support my family. I work in the area at a blue collar, a blue collar job. I, I don't see this as just my town, it belongs to all of us, especially families. We need to be inviting and helping businesses like what we've lost to come here and provide recreation opportunities. Families live here and they have kids. And if they have to go elsewhere for that recreation, they take their money with them. The current council has done a respectable job of managing the city for the past several years, but there's always room for improvement. Right now, there is too much unity of purpose between the council and the mayor. There should be diversity of thought, different perspectives and focuses, and more healthy disagreement. We shouldn't have any of our citizens feeling like they're second class or less important. We shouldn't have instances of unethical behavior or foolish mistakes. I, I don't think it's unreasonable to hold them to some basic standards and expect them to treat all constituents with respect regardless of where they stand politically or financially. As a council member, I know I would hold to, to those standards. The council needs to have someone who is sticking up for the people and looking out for them, making sure that city government works for them, not against them. I'm running because I want to listen to and serve you. I want Bardstown to remain one of the most beautiful small towns in America. I want Bardstown to be a great place to raise families and run small businesses. It should be a place that also attracts industry, but has responsibly managed growth, so we maintain that charm that Bardstown has. I'm ready to listen to and serve you, the people of Bardstown. If you want a public servant on the council who will treat you with fairness and respect no matter what, then I would appreciate your vote on November 8th.
I want to again thank everyone who was involved in putting this event on and to everyone who is here and watching. When I ran for my first term on Bardstown City Council four years ago, I stated that there were two issues I wanted to focus on. The first was the substance use disorder we face in our community. I partnered with Kenny Fogel and the Bardstown Rotary Club to form what became known as NELCARE. I lead monthly meetings with other partners where we share information and resources to address this serious issue. I recently attended the Kentucky League of Cities Fall Conference where I participated in several sessions about the opioid settlements that will soon be available to communities. I remain vigilant about monitoring when these funds will be distributed so that our community has access to them. Through my work with NELCARE, I am developing strategies and tracking stats that will be beneficial to our receipt of these funds. Through KLC, I met the Chair and Executive Director of the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission and invited him to speak at our NELCARE meeting last month. I wanted him to know that Bardstown and Nelson County is in serious need of these funds and is laying the groundwork to meet all of the guidelines and restrictions that will be attached to the receipt of these funds. My second focus area was activities for kids. Currently, the city of Bardstown has spent $5,000. We partnered with the county and BIVC, they each put in $5,000 to conduct a study about a multi-use facility. We have not spent $200,000. We do currently have $100,000 in this year's budget to begin some preliminary design work, field work, things like that, to get this project off the ground. That will include fundraising. Please vote for me. I'm on ballot number, position number seven on the ballot. Thank you.
My name is Angel Thompson. I'm passionate for progression. I care that I continue to be vigilant within this community and that I hopefully you will vote me in so that I can have the opportunity to be able to play a part of that change, that upkeep, the maintenance, and the growth of our city. I believe that I am very qualified and I believe that I will work hard to make myself accessible to you as the community and to listen and adhere to the needs of our community. I think that we're growing and I think that it's beautiful. We may be the most beautiful small town in America, but this small town is experiencing some really big growth. And with that comes change. And as before, the things mentioned such as infrastructure, recreational activities, and things like that, they matter to me. So when it comes time to vote in November, please remember my name, Angel Thompson. I'm passionate for progression. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Blackstone. We have a community that's ripe for growth, but with growth, we also have demands. And our city really needs to have more infrastructure for things for us to do inside of our city, especially for the families that live and work here. So I have some ideas about how we can create growth opportunities financially without raising the taxes. The hospital in, Baptist Hospital in Louisville has a huge rec center that they pay for. So maybe we can appeal to, I know Norton's is trying to create a more of a presence in Bardstown, maybe we can appeal to them to participate. Also, schools have endowments, like universities have endowments. So maybe the money that's going into, you know, to make our school bigger, maybe we could re-channel those monies to go into making our rec center for both of our schools. So maybe both of our schools could participate in funding that instead of building another bigger school. And also, I think that the park in downtown will be another source of income, it can be, and the wellness dream is definitely has a possibility. And that also helps us to finish the infrastructure of doing the sidewalks, which would, you know, all make sense for creating more activities for our families that live and work here. So I've been in Bardstown for 14 years. I chose Bardstown, I love it here. In the 14 years, I've worked five years with, as a chairperson on the Bourbon Festival Committee. I worked four years as a Bardstown Main Street person. I worked five years substituting for the Nelson County, Bardstown, and ATC schools. While I was at the ATC schools, I was able to see some of the opportunities that we need to work on for our children, to give them those ATC area technology opportunities. Oftentimes, we didn't have teachers there, that's a problem. So it's, it's also like live and work, make the pace we live and work a more enjoyable place, will attract more teachers and police officers, and that's again, part of our infrastructure. I also have a yoga business, it's been 14 years and am part, are co-owner of Millicare of Kentucky. So those are businesses in Bardstown.
First of all, I'd like to thank our Commonwealth for, for putting this invitation on for the prospective council members. I'd like to also thank the, all the participants that are up here on stage this afternoon to show that they do have an interest in what goes on in the city of Bardstown. But I also must call the challengers out that are up here tonight. Other than one or two people that are sitting on, up here at this, at this table, in the last two years, none of them have actually been to a city council meeting. And if you're gonna be a good city council person, preparation is the key. You, you, you talk about what we wanna do and how we wanna do, what we should do, but if you actually have not been in the weeds, at the meetings, finding out what's going on, who's doing what, what the discussions are, the questions you gotta ask that can be answered, you can't get your answers in a coffee shop or a beauty shop or a barber shop or a pawn shop or wherever else you may be getting your answers, you need to come to the source. And that's, and that's city government. So I don't care how passionate you can be about what you wanna do, how you wanna make things change, if you're not willing to do the preparation it takes to be a good city council person, then you need to do some more homework. So thank you all for being, thank you for wanting to do what you wanna do, but do what you have to do. And that's the preparation to learn what it takes to be a good city councilor. Or woman.
Again, my, my name is Gabe Hallard. I'm running fourth seat on Bardstown City Council. I do want to continue my discussion about transparency on the contractual agreement to renovate, demolish the home. On July the 12th, Mayor Heaton looked at Mr. Buckman and asked if he wanted to abstain. Don't you have a contract with the Quarks? At that point, Mr. Buckman abstained. This is not the only time that this has happened. If you go back and look through all of the meeting minutes, especially over the past six months, you can see where other council members have abstained. And again, that is a situation where they don't leave the room and recuse. Their abstention counts with the majority, creating the conflict of interest, especially in contracts when you're called to act or vote. So I am huge on open records and open meetings, big proponent, and there are ways to, to obtain information. Also, on the city council meetings, I actually contacted the city clerk and asked about how to speak at a city council meeting. And you can't just interrupt while they're conducting business. You have to be placed on the agenda in order to speak. And that's not always, that's not gonna happen unless you're, you're not gonna be able to say, well, wait a minute, I have a question here. That's not gonna happen. So, you know, it's, some of the things that we, we assume are not transparent, just like the recusal and the abstention on voting. Thank you, Gabe Ballard. Would appreciate your vote on November the 8th.
Thank you very much for all the candidates that showed up. I know it's not easy to be in front of a camera with those amazingly bright lights shining right in your face that you can't see anyone in the audience. So we appreciate your time and all your answers, appreciate the audience for being here and PLG and for our Commonwealth to put this on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to record meditations with your voice?